Button. All right, Mr. Mayor, you are on.
Good evening and welcome to the Breyer City Council Meeting of April 12th, 2022. I'll start out with a roll call. Councilmember Nick.
Here.
Councilmember Lockhart.
Here.
Councilmember Roseman.
Here.
Councilmember Crinkie.
Here.
Councilman Moran.
Here.
Councilman Marley.
Here.
Councilmember Gallagher.
I'm here.
All right, good evening, welcome everybody. Now we'll proceed to the public question oral communication portion of the meeting. This is the time when citizens can address the councilor myself. If you'd like to address the councilor myself, please raise your hand and you'll be acknowledged. Okay, Paul, we can't hear you.
I muted myself, sorry. We're letting Danielle Elliott into the meeting first.
Danielle, welcome. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Danielle Elliott. I live in Breyer on 219th Street. Would you like my full address?
Yes, please.
It's 3600 219th Street, Southwest Breyer, Washington.
All right, thank you. How can we help?
Hi, I was wondering if you all were aware of the article that came out recently about the federal relief money that Breyer chose to not apply for? And I was wondering if you could speak more about the decisions that were made and why it was decided to not apply for the money? I did read the article, but I was wondering if you could offer some more clarity to that.
Yes, I can do that. So the federal funds money that were offered, we did review them here. Obviously, the process by which appealing those funds is complicated and involved, but that was not the reason we didn't take them. We didn't have significant COVID-related expenses in the city. The funds were also meant for to replace lost sales revenue, which most cities had as sales tax revenues went down because people weren't shopping at the local stores. Instead of going to Alderwood Mall, people were inviting or ordering stuff online and having it delivered to their homes. So actually, our revenues went up instead of going down like a lot of our cities. I did reach out to the businesses in our commercial district to see how they were doing, and I didn't get any requests for seeking federal funds. If they would have, they don't actually need the city of Breyer to receive those funds. But none of them either, they said they were didn't need the funds or they didn't reply back to my response. There's a lot of questions about exactly what the funds can be used for. And I wanted to make sure that the funds were used correctly. City of Breyer does not have a lot of the things that were suggested for the use of the funds. For instance, projects that met the criterion that other cities had, we did not meet. Breyer also does not have low-income housing, cultural centers, mental health facilities, a wastewater treatment plant, rental assistance programs, language teaching centers, and other medical relief organizations that were typically recommended for those funds. What I'd like to do is if you have further questions, please feel free to give me a call here at City Hall. My number is here at City Hall is 425-775-5440. And I'd love to talk with any of you about it, questions that you may have. It's a complicated issue, and I don't think I could do it justice either in an email or tonight on this city council meeting. But I would, I welcome phone calls, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody that would like to talk about it. All right.
Okay, I'm going to allow Sham into the meeting.
Welcome Sham, name and address, please.
Sure. Hi Sham Othman, 3601 228th Street, Southwest.
How can we help?
I am, I guess, tagging along to Danielle's question as well regarding the crosscut article. And my question was, I guess it can be a yes or no question. Did anyone at the city specifically look at the reporting requirements to apply for the federal COVID relief? I know a lot of people have said it was going to be a lot of work or could have been a lot of work. But it mentions that 241 small towns in the state of Washington applied for those funds. Six did not, with Breyer being one of them, and I'd be surprised that 241 small towns could figure it out and make it work, and that Breyer could not. Adding to that, the article says that the funds could be used for sewer water, broadband, infrastructure improvements. And last year during the mayoral debate, you had mentioned that the sewer repairs are not inexpensive for Breyer. So Breyer does have eligible expenses, and the funds could have been used to then save taxpayer money. So what are your response to that?
Well, I did look at the documents for filling it out. I think Paula did too. Just with respect to what some cities did with the funds, we were not eligible for those funds. A lot of those things that people think we were eligible for are basically shovel-ready projects. We do not, at that point in time, we did not have any shovel-ready sewer projects that we could have had those funds applied to, in my opinion. I know a lot of other cities took the funding, and I heard from some of them why they took the funding. I didn't necessarily agree, or I didn't agree that they were appropriate for our city. So I didn't apply for them. And again, if you have further questions, Sham, please feel free to give me a call here at City Hall.
I'm going to allow Linda Myers in to talk.
Hi Linda, welcome. Name and address, please.
Linda Myers, 3611 233rd Place, Southwest Breyer. I've been living in Tucson for the winter, but I have participated in the Breyer Community Group Facebook page, and I was aware that there was some discussion about this. And my question is, what you're saying tonight is fairly clear that you carefully read what was eligible for the shovel-ready projects. And I heard you say that you read that and that Paula read that. And I'm wondering, in situations like this, do you also consult with others? For example, the people on the city council or others, or is this one something that was best handled by just the mayor's decision?
Well, members of the city council were consulted, but it is basically an administrative decision to apply for the funds. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Linda. Again, if you have any further questions, please feel free to call me. Do any of the, any other hands raised, Paula?
There are no other hands raised.
All right, I'll say one more time, this is the public request and oral communication portion of the meeting. If you'd like to address the councilor myself, please raise your hand and all right, any of the council members would like to respond to the questions?
No, I'll just echo what you said, Mayor, that we were consulted. There was a, I believe it was a workshop, might have been a council meeting, but this was discussed, mentioned, and also noted about things like the projects and such were not shovel-ready. I also had read through the documents, and even when some of this, kind of when that article came out, there had been some references to new changes in the guidelines to try to make it easier. And when I went back and read it, I still found it, I could not see a situation where it really justified where we in Breyer could request such funds. So that would be my.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. Yes. Go ahead.
Um, I would like to additionally point out that while the council was consulted, it's the council's function to look at laws and rules of our city, and it's the mayor and staff's function to execute those laws and rules. And we rely heavily on the expertise of the executive branch to look at these things and critically evaluate them. And we did appreciate being approached by the staff, even though it's certainly not required.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. We'll move on again. Just for those that have further questions, please feel free to call me here at City Hall. If I don't, if I'm not here, please leave a message. I will get back to you. Moving on to reports of committees and city officials, I would just like to report my interactions with Snoomish County mayors. The big topic of discussion with the mayors of Snoomish County is around policing. And I've talked about this before. There's some real concerns with respect to current Washington state legislation. There's concerns about retaining and attracting police officers. There's also concerns with respect to funding of policing. This is the primary focus that we, as the mayors, are getting together and talking about and are planning to reach out to our legislators and the governor with respect to the significant concerns that we have with respect to policing, the funding, the legislation, and the retention. We are losing police officers across the county and across the state at alarming numbers. And this is going to make a situation that is going to be very difficult. We also have some serious concerns about some of the recent legislation that was passed, and those issues are coming to the forefront and are definitely an area of focus we have as mayors. Any other reports of committees or city officials?
I'll go. Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, on April 1st, we had a Zoom meeting with you, Chief Nick and Paula on the lieutenant contract. And then on April 11th, I met with Councilman Marley and the chief discussing the leasing of cars.
Thank you. Mr. Marley, you.
Yes, I met with Dennis and the chief to discuss the leasing and purchase options towards police cars.
Yes, and I appreciate the expertise, and I met with the chief earlier today, and that discussion is ongoing, and we're still working on that. He's working on that, and we're trying to come to a clear understanding of what the best thing to do with respect to leasing or purchasing police cars. So I appreciate the input that both of you had. Anybody else?
Mr. Gallagher has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher.
Okay, so I looked at the bills and statements. That's one. Had community transit board meetings. They're continuing to see good revenues, and ridership is increasing. Some building going on up there for their maintenance facility, so that's good. And we got the street sweeper running.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. The street sweeper is running, but today was reported by Public Works at the Vector. So get ready for the next call, Mike, about the Vector.
Can do that.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on to.
I met with the library board on the 7th. And then Councilmember Moran and I had a brief meeting with Councilmember Don, County Councilmember Don, regarding tree canopy.
Right, thank you. We're looking forward to the next week's workshop where that's going to be discussed. Thank you. Don, you agree with that?
Yes, Valerie took the words right out of my mouth. So thanks for speaking up. Indeed, we met with Megan, and I'm looking forward to next Tuesdays. I think we learned some things we weren't expecting to hear, and I think it'll be interesting to share that with the council next week. I went in with an expectation of where the policy was going. I discovered it's a different outcome than what I had predicted. So stay tuned. We'll discuss next Tuesday.
Looking forward to that. Thank you.
Valerie, can you reach out to your contact? Because they still haven't ever sent me anything for the packets for next week.
Yes, I have. It was on my list. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, moving on to approval of minutes. I'd entertain a motion.
So.
Whoever that was.
I think Gallagher moved first, and I'll give the second to Moran. Is that right, Paula?
It was Gallagher and Nick were the ones I heard first, and then Marley came in right behind.
Okay, I'm going to make the executive decision as Gallagher and Moran. That's the motion in the second. Any discussion of the motion? To approve the city council minutes of March 22. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, thinking about by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You post a nay? And the motion passes. Consent agenda, these are items that we have discussed in workshop previously. I am going to take them one at a time. So item A, consider the bond release for the request of the previous owner on Breyer Landing. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond release for the previous owner of Breyer Landing.
Second emotion.
Motion by Gallagher, second by Nick. Any discussion of the. Excuse me, Marley. Marley then Nick. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing that, all in favor, thinking about by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You post a nay? And the motion passes. Item B, consideration of the bid for sidewalk tripping hazard repairs from precision concrete cutting in the amount not to exceed $22,000. Do you recall in workshop, we got a grant for part of this, and then we're paying for part of it per the grants requirements? Okay, I think a motion by Nick?
No, I thought Don was going to make that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm looking for the right verbiage. This, but indeed, I make a motion to approve the sidewalk repair work by precision concrete in accord with the invoice, at least the proposal request provided.
Motion by Moran?
Actually, I need the motion to be as it's listed on your agenda, because we are asking for an amount not to exceed $22,000.
Thank you, Paula. Councilmember Moran, could you read the motion for?
Yes, I'm looking for it right now. So give me a second here. I love my computer. It kind of spazzed out on me here. Give me just a second. So the motion is to approve the bid for sidewalk trip hazard repairs from precision concrete cutting in an amount not to exceed $22,000.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion by Moran?
Second.
Second by Marley. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing that, all in favor, thinking about by saying aye?
Aye.
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 You post a nay? And the motion passes. Item number C in the consent agenda, consideration of the personal services contract with Chad Riddout for Police Lieutenant here in Breyer.
I'm going to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I haven't made the motion yet, so hold on there, Johnny.
I had you so moved it.
I'm bringing Chad and the chief into the meeting.
Oh, okay.
All right. Bring him in.
I thought you still moved that one, Danny.
No, no, that's too easy. But I do want to make a motion to the Breyer City Council and the mayor of the approval of the personal service contract with Chad Riddout for Police Lieutenant of the Breyer Police Department.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Nick. We have a second by Lockhart. Before we get to discussion of the motion, I just want to go over the process, just so everybody understands or remind people of the process. So this election is an administrative task. The council gets input, and the council gets to, is tasked with reviewing and approving the contract should they decide to do so. The review, the screening process for this position is significant, very similar to that of the chief, which we recently went through. It is a very intense review. The applicant has to go through lie detector, a psychological exam. There's interviews, background checks, which are extensive. I reviewed pages and pages of documents with respect to the applicant, and I interviewed Chad, and I also met with him on another occasion. It's my opinion that Chad's very qualified and has the personal and professional skills for this position. I believe he'd be a great addition to our city's police department staff. Next, what I'd like to do is throw it to our chief of police for his comments, and then we'll let Chad have an opportunity to address you. Go ahead, chief.
Well, thank you, counsel, and good evening to you. I echo what the mayor has said, and having personal knowledge of Chad Riddout during his entire law enforcement career, I can speak with a lot of wisdom, insight, and confidence in bringing him forward to you tonight. A little bit about Chad. Chad grew up in the Snoqualmie Valley, and he went to Cedar Park Christian School in Bothell. He went to college at Bethany University in California, where he received two bachelor's degrees, one in business administration and the other in church leadership. He met his lovely bride Emily, and well, they were at least married in 2009. And Chad, during this time of their, after college and being married, he worked significantly in the real estate industry as well as working in the church, doing church ministry. And I know he's a musician, so maybe one day he might, you know, play the guitar and sing for us. I've heard him before. He's pretty good. And so Chad started working for the police department in 2015 for the Snoqualmie Police Department. Having been on his hiring process and decision-making, that was one of the best decisions I think that I've ever made. Chad comes with a lot of quality. And some of the things that make Chad the way that he is, is he comes with a little bit more life experience than somebody that starts brand new. I mean, I started when I was 22. A lot of people do, but when you, when you get somebody that's already been, you know, through college, has been married for amount of time prior to getting into this type of work, it brings a sense of their own life experience. And Chad really brought that forward in everything that he did while he was with Snoqualmie. Some of the things that Chad did while he was at Snoqualmie, he was a field training officer. And that position, I would say, is one of the most liability-type positions that you can have in a police department, because you're training new people. And Chad had the opportunity to train several new officers and lateral officers and make them successful. And he was also very good at pointing out the things that they need to work on. So that field training position really crafted Chad into molding him into being an even stronger officer and leader. He also was an instructor in vehicle, emergency vehicle operation. And what that is, counsel, if you're not aware, is once a year, we have a low-speed and high-speed certifications that we go through for pursuit decision driving. So Chad has been an instructor in that arena for a couple of years. And he's also even one-upped that where he, he works for, or I don't know if he still does, but he had worked for a rally school in Snoqualmie called Dirt Fish. Some of you probably know, they're televised, and a lot of, a lot of people go there and learn how to drift and and so forth. Chad knows a lot more about that than me, but he was one of the instructors out there. So he's a very good driver. How about would you say that? He also was a vice president of the Snoqualmie Police Association, so he's very schooled in union contracts, union negotiations, grievance processes, everything that has to do with the union. So along with that, Chad is bringing that to Breyer to help during those times of mitigating any of those issues that come forward. And that has definitely been one of my goals is to, I never want to be able to have a grievance go past step one to the mayor. I want to be able to resolve these at my level so that you never have to go into any type of arbitration situations. He also was an officer in charge, and that is when the sergeant is away, he's in charge of the squad. He also stepped up to the plate and was an acting sergeant for a period of time when we were, we had two sergeants retire. So it left a deficit in leadership, and I put an announcement out to the current OICs, and Chad stepped up and led his team for several months in in a way that I would have expected him to. He and his wife, excuse me, have a son, a really young son, and they have their, made their home in Preston, Washington. I had the privilege to watching him grow up into the leader that he is today. And I'm telling you, from my perspective and from what I have seen in Chad, that we are getting a very strong, ethical, and well-rounded lieutenant for the Breyer Police Department. I'm very excited for Chad to come on as a command officer. He has that integrity and honor that is going to help shape Breyer PD and assist me as a team. Chad understands the theme of if not us, then who? And that has been our mantra since I've gotten here is that in Snoqualmie, we had the no call too small, but it's kind of the same thing, is that he understands that concept in a small community where that is the most important thing that community members look at is how we treat our community. And it is true that, and I'll go into this a little bit later in some, an example of that, but of something that happened last week, but he truly understands the value in reinvesting back into our communities. And I also want to thank you, counsel, for seeing the value of broadening our leadership in the police department. I'm having a blast, but I can tell you that having another layer of command staff is so vital to not only just having a buffer between me and the patrol officers, but also being able to spread the leadership abroad so that things can be done in a way that isn't just my eight or 10 hours a day trying to make everything jive, being able to give him responsibilities so that everything can be created in a way and time and in a timely way for efficiency and thoughtfulness. So I just want to thank you, counsel, for having that, that thought process before I ever became your chief to create lieutenant position for the Breyer Police Department. So thank you very much. That's what I know about Chad, and I'm delivering you a very amazing candidate.
And you can't tease us with the story that he did something exceptional last week and not drop it.
Well, it wasn't Chad, though.
Oh. You get to hear, you get to hear about it later. It was another officer. But thank you. Thank you, chief. And Chad, welcome to our meeting. I'm going to let you address the council. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm grateful for this opportunity to be here today before you, and I am honored to be considered for this position. It comes with an extreme amount of ownership that I'm looking forward to taking and an extreme amount of focus. And I think the city of Breyer is an awesome opportunity right now. You guys just hired an amazing chief. You're hiring additional officers, and the city of Breyer is a special place. I grew up in a small town. And when I got into policing, one of the things that drew me to Snoqualmie is the small-town policing field. And when I got into policing, one of the things that drew me to Snoqualmie is the small town policing feel. And being part of the community, being able to go and hang out with the kids at the skate park and go to the schools and get to know the community members and things like that. And when the opportunity to, to work in Briar was presented to me, that was one of the things that I really noticed. And I realized would be an exceptional fit for me. Yeah, I do like catching bad guys and I like doing all the police work and keeping things safe. But having that connection to the community is, is huge. And, and with that, I'm really excited to get to know the officers more. I have met a couple of them already. You already have an awesome team. And so anything that I can do to come in and continue to, to glue the team together through communication and build up that camaraderie. I mean, that's going to be definitely a goal. It's a unique city in that a lot of times officers work one at a time, maybe with a little bit of overlap. And so building up that camaraderie is going to be really, really a special opportunity. I think there's opportunity to, to grow in the training, which is, is a passion for me. I, as Chief said, I love training officers. I love working with people. It really is what it comes down to. I love being able to instruct and teach them what I may know and, and then see what they, they may have that I don't know and see how I can become better. One of the things that is exceptional for me, when I think about somebody else and a new officer coming in or maybe a lateral officer is how can we help you succeed and become the best that you can possibly be? And that's something that I want to continue to act on is not operate in any pride, but in humility, thinking about how can we build up our officers so that we can serve our community really well to meet the needs of, of the community, whatever those may be. If it's a crime prevention focus, or if it's more community outreach, outreach focus, or proactive patrol, or meet and greets with whoever it may be. You know, we want to be the, the hands and feet of, of the community and serve. And that's, that's what we're supposed to do as police officers. We're here to serve. And I am very excited about the opportunity to serve in the city of Briar. I do think it is the appropriate next step for me and my family. And again, I'm grateful for the opportunity for this and I'm very excited to, to, to come on board and work alongside with, with chief and mayor, council and the citizens and officers that are there right now. Thank you again for this opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Chief. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion?
Well, Ms. Bear, I feel I, I've had some concerns, folks have known. And I think the best way for me to just put down my take is to just read off a statement, what I've written. Not actually expecting a lot of debate on it or anything like that. People are certainly will respond, but I thought maybe it was just best if I read this and then I will give Paula a copy of this to go into the, the record for this. But I just feel like it's the best way to just communicate and try to avoid perhaps some of the situations that happened in the past. So if, if that would be right.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Previously, when the discussion was broached at a Briar City Council meeting about looking to fill previously, the previously created position of police lieutenant, it was mentioned that the leading candidate was someone who had been terminated from the previous position failing to comply with the vaccine policies of the department and city. At that time, I expressed my concerns about hiring folks in this situation. Today, we find ourselves being asked to approve a contract for a police department leadership position for which this is the situation. I will note that I am concerned about hiring someone into a leadership position pertaining to public safety who chose to not follow the well-founded facts of science for how such can protect both the individual and more importantly, the people they are there to protect and serve. I wish to also acknowledge that this is a concern for a good number of our citizens. Unfortunately, at this time, I have no other information that would cause me to change my position. I haven't continued to be open to such information. I have discussed this with the mayor for whom I have continued to have great respect, yet at this time I cannot support the proposed contract. I have always been and will continue to be a strong supporter of the police department as officers, and I have worked to ensure that the department has a strong and positive relationship with our community. I also fundamentally believe that the actions taken in the state legislature toward policing have been fundamentally flawed, simplistic and misguided attempt to address some broader policing concerns. This has in turn further contributed to a climate the mayor has also noted that many officers and potential officers are turning away from this line of work. It is unfortunate to put it mildly and puts further stress on our city and other police departments staff to the necessary levels. To that end, I want to state that regardless of the vote for this contract, Chief Alenquist, our officers, and if the contract is approved for Chad, will have and continue to have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crinkie. Any other discussion of the motion? One more time, any other discussion to the motion? All right, hearing none, we'll go on to vote on the motion. All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
And the way I interpret it, the motion passes. So I want to thank our chief and I want to thank Chad for joining us tonight. And we look forward to his presence and helping out with policing in our city. So thanks, both of you.
Welcome aboard, Chad.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Chief.
Chad, I'm kicking you out as a panelist, but I'm leaving the chief in because he has more stuff to talk about.
Paula. Keep it out with love.
Exactly.
Okay, we're moving on to ordinances, resolutions tonight. Item number A, consideration of resolution number five, eight, nine, adopting revision to the city fee schedule. This is something that we've workshopped before. Do you have the documentation in front of you? I would entertain a motion.
I was trying to find the right window.
Go ahead, Martin.
All right. I would move that we approve resolution number five, eighty-nine, adopting the revised city fee schedule. And I will thank Eric Beverly for the good work he did on this.
Yes. Motion by Crinkie?
Second.
Second by Marley. Any discussion of the motion?
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, we want to thank Eric. He did a, he did a great job and there's a lot of items that were changed and a lot of comparison to other cities and we are a unique city with some of our stuff. But Eric did a great job, so we want to thank him.
He is on the meeting listening too, so he can, he can hear you all, so.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Any, any, no other, just hearing no other discussion. All in favor of the motion, so you know I was saying aye?
Aye.
You opposed, say nay? And the motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous business by city council members and city officials, I'm going to bring our chief back here for his typical council member report. Thanks for sticking around, chief.
Absolutely. So we are starting on Monday, the 18th, and thank you for your decision tonight. We will have two starting on Monday. So we're very thankful for that. We have our last and final position that is in background right now. And we have one other potential candidate that might be applying. So it's kind of, it's really nice to have more candidates than positions. And we're in a really good spot and I'm really excited about that. And when we swear in these folks, you've met Chad, but when you, when we swear in the, the other officer that starts on Monday, his name's Alex Hawley. You'll get an opportunity to meet him on Zoom and he can talk to you. Very quality gentleman and 10 years of law enforcement, lots of SWAT and gang and narcotics and detective background. So 10 years in the Marine Corps. So he is highly qualified. We're pretty excited about him too. So we're hoping to be fully staffed by, I am guesstimating about May 15th area. So we're going to be in a really good place. We can then move our way from thanking Snohomish County Sheriff's Department for their services and we can be fully on our own. And that'll be, that'll be exciting for us. So as the mayor has said, that we're going to continue to work on the, the car purchase leasing discussion. As said prior, I've had the great opportunity to actually meet Councilman Marley for the first time in person and not virtually. What a great guy, very smart. And I appreciate the insight that he's given as well as when I meet. It's been pretty regular. I think Councilman Nick and I meet probably almost once a week. So at least that's been the average and I appreciate his insight to the police department and where we're going and, and just his interest. And as, as when I first got here, Councilman Crinkie and I had met. And I, I just appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness and desire to know what's going on. And so we're just, we, we've been doing a lot of rebuilding in the police department as far as restructuring. We've basically cleaning house and getting it to a place where the officers can come in there and feel it as, as their home, as it should be. And the mayor's been gracious to allow me to spend some, some money and to, not only in the things that you guys have done prior to, to my, my arriving, but just some infrastructure stuff to make sure that the police department is running smoothly. And anytime you want to come to the police department, I can give you a tour. I don't know if you knew what it looked like before, but I can show you what it looks like now. And it's, it's very organized. So I, I appreciate that. Like I, I truly mean, if you ever want to come in and, and have a tour, I'm more than willing to do that. So we're just, we're just kind of working through all the different thing dynamics. I helped the mayor a little bit, give him some, some of the legislation items that he and the other mayors in Snohomish County are working on. And so that was, that was nice to be able to give him some of my insight into what some of the mayors should be thinking about and crafting. And I know that that's a work in progress. So I have faith. I have faith that our legislation will make some changes to allow police officers to do their job more effectively for the community and keep them safe in any ways possible. So. But I'm optimistic. So I do want to tell you a little, a little example. Councilman Lockhart, I'll, I'll tell you about it now. Just one example of the over and it, over and beyond that your officers do in the community. We had been called, Officer Kendrick was called to a welfare check of sorts to a lady's home. She's 81. The IKEA employee was going there to set up furniture that she had ordered and have delivered. And he had done this for her routinely. And it was highly unlike her to not answer the door. So he called the police department and the fire department. And there was no, not, no answer at the door. You couldn't see anything in the windows. Officer Kendrick took off a screen off of a window. He finally found a window that was, that, that was unlocked, opened it up and yelled inside if anyone needed any help. And at first he didn't hear anything and then he heard a faint cry for help. And, excuse me, this lady had been laying on the, on the floor. She had fallen off of her scooter and she couldn't get up for upwards of over three days. And the only thing showed no food, no water. And the only thing that she had was a blanket and luckily she could reach her TV remote. So she watched TV for all this time, couldn't get to a phone or anything like that. So the aid crew came in and they checked her vitals. And as such, with a lot of elderly folks, they don't want to go to the hospital. So Rob made her a sandwich and she wanted her favorite cookies and they got her on her scooter and made sure she was hydrated. And the, her nephew lived across the street, which obviously a lot of us were like, why didn't anyone check on her? Because there was groceries stacking up at the door. And so we got ahold of him and gave him some advice on making sure that he checks up on his elderly aunt. And we highly encouraged an alert bracelet that he should purchase right away. And so that this doesn't happen again. So we've kind of made it our goal to check on her and make sure that she's, she's being cared for and the nephew's following through on the things that we talked to him about. So that was just a really neat way of something that, you know, we've, over the years, I've gone to a lot of welfare checks where, you know, you don't have these exigent circumstances to kick in a door. But if you can find a way, if there's a will, there's a way to try and at least open up a window or something to get in and see if anybody's there. And it worked out. So I just appreciate Officer Kendrick and his, his desire to just not walk away. So that's just one example.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Anything else?
Not us, who, right, chief?
Right. That's exactly right.
Great story, chief.
Yeah.
Chief, how, how many months have you been with us now?
I have been with you for about two and a half months.
Yeah, so me being mayor for almost two years and getting, getting zero qualified applicants for our police department. New chief comes in, in a matter of a few months, we're looking at fully staffing our important department over there on the other side of the building. And so I just want to give the chief the credit he deserves for making, attracting, you know, a number of candidates. We had, you know, not everybody makes it through the screening process. But we're, we're well on our way in a matter of a few months to fully staffing the police department. And I think this is beyond my wildest expectations. So I want to thank the chief.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Any other council members, let's see, miscellaneous business?
It's super exciting, but I need to take the picture.
Okay.
And I've been trying to snap it ad hoc as we're going through and it's like trying to get a picture of my kids at the same time.
Wait a second. We need to, we need to push the chief and I out?
Oh, no, it's good. I can cut you guys off.
Okay. I don't, I don't know where we show up on your screen, but online, I'm right in the middle top and he's the bottom.
Politely excise you from our photo.
Please do. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to do this and see how it turns out. So look pretty. Hang on. Let me make sure the Lockhart isn't sticking his tongue out like he was last time. Hey, you guys all look pretty good. All right, that'll work. For the audience, we were realizing that we are way remiss in getting an updated photo of council up on the website. So we'll have a Zoom photo of us on the, on the website to be replaced with the in-person at some point. So thank you for your photogenic abilities, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from another council member? All right. Hearing nothing, we'll move on to auditing of accounts. Councilmember Gallagher.
Well, I would move that we approve the March 2022 claim check number four, three, five, six, seven, checks number four, three, five, seven, three through four, three, five, seven, seven. Checks number four, three, five, seven, nine through number four, three, six, two, five. And EFE, EFT transactions in the amount of 1,151, $636.32. Voided check number four, three, one, eight, six, because we lost it. And we reissued check four, three, five, seven, eight.
Second, that motion.
Now, we have a motion by Gallagher, a second by Nick. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion passes. Thank you. We will have a workshop next week, Tuesday evening. So thank you, everyone, for participating tonight and we are adjourned.
Thanks all. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.